Follow this meeting's order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Rosiano?
Here.
O'Carroll?
Here.
Robel?
Here.
Stromel Burke?
Here.
And Mayor Melham.
I'm on mute. Okay, sorry about that. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation, on our land, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Tom is feet and not up.
Where? Not coming up here?
While they're doing that, we can read the Sunshine Notice.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, known as the Sunshine Law, notice of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22, 2022, editions of the Belleville Times and Star-Leddy. The Sunshine Law was complied with by adopting it forward into the press, posting a file with the municipal clerk, and the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting. A copy of this annual meeting notice has been posted on the Towns Rowton Board.
Thank you. I'm going to actually entertain a motion to change the order of the meeting to adopt Resolution 170-2023, appointing Vincent Cazarelli as Deputy Mayor of the Township Belleville, and Resolution 154-2023, appointing Stephen J. Martino as Township Attorney of Township Belleville. I have a motion. I can't make a motion, so.
I'll make a motion second.
Motion made. Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll for the two resolutions.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yeah.
Should abstain. Self-serving person in your office.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Carroll?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stromel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. At this point, the next item on our agenda is the oath of office. We have a very special guest with us today. We have our County Commissioner, Mr. Palmaras, who represents the Township of Belleville, and I must say, he's done a fine job. We've seen him here very often in Belleville. He's become certainly a friend, and he's on hand today to administer the oath of office to the man who will become Deputy Mayor Saturday at noon.
Tom, it's still you for a couple days.
You're still the man, huh?
It's a vote. No matter how he slices it, it's a vote.
Pull him in. Carlos is going to have you. You can go if you wish, if you want. Boy, you get to bring all your family.
All three.
All three.
Want a beer? Close enough to you? And Mrs. Cazarelli, congratulations today. Before I start, I want to thank the mayor and council for the invitation to be here today, because this is the best part of any public service is when you get to acknowledge wonderful people who do a lot of great things in their community, and this is my no means any exception. I know Councilman Cazarelli, as everyone calls him Vinny, because he is your cousin Vinny, is truly an exceptional public servant. And going back to my days as Councilman in Bloomfield, next door, I remember anytime I came over to Belleville, I was always greeted with a very warm welcome by Vinny. And we do a lot of work. We're out there. I know I see a lot of you folks, because this is a very active administration for sure under the mayor's leadership. And we're always out there. And as you know, Essex County is no stranger to Belleville. We're here quite a bit, and we do the best we can. And it's our job to do what we can to assist you. And in the spirit of great public service, it is a real honor to be here today, accompanied by the two very lovely ladies, Mrs. Cazarelli and Mrs. Cazarelli. And Cazarelli Jr. So Cazarelli, little baby, coming in six weeks. So yeah, it'll be here before you know it, and then you'll understand what real service is. And as a true friend that he is, I told him to come new to glasses. And so he said, you know, can you print this up to 14 points? You did. And the truth is, I still can't read it up to 14 points. So 16 points. Next time around, let's do 16 points. It's no fault of anyone but mine by failing to admit that I need more powerful glasses. All right, Councilman, read it right hand and repeat after me. I, Vincent Cazarelli.
I, Vincent Cazarelli.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith?
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States?
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state?
In this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
I say your name?
I, Vincent Cazarelli.
Do further solemnly swear or affirm?
Do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully?
Faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly? Perform all the duties?
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Deputy Mayor?
Of the office of Deputy Mayor.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, Councilman.
Drinks, Lyndy, Deputy Mayor, adage after the meal. Thank you very generously, you, Vince. Saturday again. So the next item on our agenda will be administering the oath of office to our Township Attorney, Mr. Steve Martino, who will not assume that title of reappointment until Saturday at noon. I was going to swear on Mr. Martino, but since we have one of his dearest friends here, who we don't get to see all that often in our council meetings, I'm going to give that honor once again to Mr. Palmaras. This the first time you've ever sworn him in?
This is indeed the first time I've officially sworn him in. Although I voted for him in other capacity, because he's not such a guy. So I do want to say a few words, because the Martinos are good friends of mine, excellent public servant as well. Steve Martino and I go back to my days in Bloomfield. And he has always been someone you can count on, for very good and excellent advice. You know, whether he wanted it or not, he's going to make sure you get it, because that's his job after all.
Very true.
And he certainly does that. I know he tried to keep the mayor in line as well, right? Does that work out?
It does.
Okay, all right.
Imagine if he wasn't here.
That's a full-time job.
It is a full-time job. And when he isn't doing public service, he's usually doing something with me for charity. And we do a lot of work through our Bloomfield Cruisers Classic Car Club. And he also crossed the country last year as my navigator as we raised funds for a high school student to go to technical school. And you know, charity is very much at the heart of not just Steve, but his lovely wife Roz, who is also a very close, dear friend of mine. So very honored to be able to do this to him. And I mean it, too. I mean, that's what I was going to say. All right.
I'm honored to have you.
Was it a surprise?
It was a surprise. I'd be surprised if it was a little tricky.
All right. I, Stephen J. Martino?
I, Stephen J. Martino.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey?
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance?
To the same?
To the same.
And to the government established in the United States?
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state?
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
I say your name?
I, Stephen J. Martino.
Do further solemnly swear or affirm?
Do further solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
And justly perform?
And justly perform.
All the duties?
All the duties.
Of the office of Township Attorney?
Of the office of Township Attorney.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations. This concludes my portion of the program. I want to thank you all for coming. I'll be abreast if anyone comes to see you any time soon. We'll be sure to pay your money.
Please give Cora my regards.
I will. And again, mayor and council members, all of you, thank you very much for this warm welcome. It's always a pleasure to be here. Steve is your next coordinator.
Thank you.
Thanks, brother.
Thank you.
Drinks on Steve Saturday night after. So at this point, once our clerk, the manager, and our CFO are seated, we're going to move on with the rest of the meeting.
Is it? It's on the.
Oh, it's on the photo. That was actually a gift to me.
Was it?
Yeah. All right, so the next item on our agenda is number seven. But before that, I'm going to ask the clerk to read his scripts. Do we have council members with scripts? I can disguise my voice as a council member. Can it be in the email?
Mayor, this is the time to fix the public hearing on the 2023 municipal budget. The budget was approved by the mayor and council on March 28, 2023, and was advertised in full as required by law together with the notice of the hearing for this time. Mayor, I have resolution regarding the reading of the budget by title only. That's Resolution 166-2023.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move its adoption.
Sounds like we have a motion. Let me just get a second on that motion. So we have motion made and second. Going to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Mayor, council?
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Carroll?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Stromel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. The resolution is adopted. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising, as nearly as I can determine. Please address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the Township Council or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before us. School and county matters are not proper subjects for this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered tonight. I now declare the public hearing for the 2023 municipal budget as open. Anybody for the public hearing on the municipal budget? Mr. Frank Tantoni? Just make sure that speaker's on, please, somebody?
It is.
Michael?
It is. Good evening. I've been getting budgets for 40 years. After the budget was introduced, I went down to clerk, and Mr. Cabrera gave me a copy of the budget. I've never seen a budget like this.
Yeah, me either. It's $88 increase.
Yeah, but you've got to keep interrupting me. You're letting me speak, all right? Of the 24 blank pages, all right? Surplus anticipated, blank. All the other ones where you look, where you can ask your question, why did this go up? Why did this go down? Blank, blank, blank. So I know you councilmen got a different budget that you looked at, but the public may did not get that kind of budget. So I'll ask you something. Under anticipated revenues, all on sheet four, and I won't go with that, you have the budget there, all the items are exactly the same as last year. Was there any thought put together on these things? And some of them, I think we should have had increased revenue of these items.
You said sheet four?
Yeah.
Is there a letter or is it sheet four?
Yeah, sheet number four. Sheet four.
All right, hold on. Yeah, I should have probably announced this. So we do have seated the table with us not only our township manager and our clerk, but we have our CFO, who prepared the budget for us. So he'll probably be taking the majority of the questions and fielding the questions, providing answers. So is there?
First answer to your question, there is no surplus anticipated. What about anticipating any surplus? You know, last year, we're not doing any of this. There's no surplus.
Yeah, we. No surplus anticipated. That doesn't mean there's any no surplus balance.
Okay. No anticipated.
Okay. The second question, or the second item in your age, was we have a supplemental report that was sent to Trent for the realized revenues that will get incorporated when Trent does its review, that will get sent in. We've had to do a separate analysis, because we changed one procedure this year, that they're flowing into there in the separate reports sent to Trent. So we'll have that in the next round.
The copy of the budget I have is not accurate. It's not what you heard.
You've got to be more specific than that. You've got to be more specific.
Well.
You've got to be more specific than that.
I'm telling you, being more specific, on sheet four, every item is the same as last year.
That's right.
Is that going to stay that way?
Those are going to stay the same.
So what are you waiting for?
Those are local miscellaneous revenues.
What are you waiting for the state to give you?
What do we wait for? A budget review.
The state?
Yeah, we get a budget review every year.
All right, the.
They will. They have to. That's why we.
Energy receipt tax. What is that from?
Page five.
Page five.
That's state aid.
That's state aid?
Yep.
Page six, construction code fees. We're bringing, and we see this construction all over the place. Anticipated revenue states the same, 1.2 million?
Yep.
We don't anticipate any increase for all construction?
I'm using that to replenish the surplus going into '24. We're not going to raise any local revenues if we don't have to. It was run down to cash deficit going into 2021. So we need to replenish surplus balance. We're not anticipating any surplus as a revenue, and we're coming in low with our anticipated revenues, the local ones.
I'm addressing this specific line item. Construction code fees. You don't anticipate any increase from last year's?
I do anticipate it, but I'm not going to put it in as a revenue. I'm going to take it in as surplus. Frank, if I may, I also believe that the 2022 number was considerably higher because of all the new construction. And it was high. The same amount of construction is anticipated for 2023, which is why it stays the same. Yes, yes, Mayor. The expected amount for 2023 will probably be even higher than that. We need to replenish the surplus. It is, it was completely depleted. So we need to use your miscellaneous revenues, the excesses, to start putting that money back. Got it.
All right, so you're not anticipating a surplus, but you're building the individual line item.
Not anticipating any surplus as a revenue.
Yeah. Well, what are the things for revenue?
Yeah. Talk about now, it's just generating surplus, and there's anticipating an amount of that as a revenue. I anticipate generating it. I'm not anticipating any as a revenue.
All right, now the page seven, under shared services, BOE, Board of Education. This is anticipated revenue. It's at the principal, 1,190,000, interest 297,000. How is that revenue? Where's that coming in from?
Board of Education. From the Board of Education.
The Board of Education has given us?
1/10 of 11.9 million. One second.
Quote, which I don't believe is shared services according to state law, but we'll address that at another time. Also, line nine, page nine, you got one line, clean communities, which I assume we've been getting money every year. That's fine. And developers' contribution, that's fine. We don't anticipate money from those two.
Now, well, the amounts that we got in were being... We didn't get in any additional ones prior to this. If we do, we're going to amend it. Yeah, we're going to amend it with 159.
The clean communities.
The grants are... The grants that they've covered, they have a ton of grants that have been included in the amendment. They had too many on the list to include in the introduction. They're going to include the bulk of the grants in the amendment. And developers' contribution will be, I'm sorry, in the budget amendments. The 159 for any developers' contribution.
All right, so we don't see all of them, because I'm the... The same thing with page 9A. There's a lot of items there. I own list of most, about 12, 15 of them. Once again, they're all blank, and I've never seen that before.
Well, they'll all be...
They were included in that. Anticipated revenue. This is blank, 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 page after blank, so.
Well, they're the grants. The grants. So they're going to be included in our budget amendment in full. There are too many to get lined up before the introduction. So we're going to amend those.
Well, it's been done 40 years that I've looked at budgets.
It hasn't been done very well for 40 years.
I have all those budgets.
I have two, and I can tell you the first thing that hasn't been done very well, so it's going to be done incorrectly now.
Okay, we'll see. Sheet 11. Shared service agreement, 1.487 million. What's that for? Sheet 11.
That's a sub... That's a subtotal brought forward from the sections. See, it says total section C. Where you read from before is the detail of section C. These are the subtotals brought forward to summary of sheet 11.
But the line item on form specifically says shared service agreement.
That's the section title, shared service agreements. That's section D, Delta. The area, the detail pages on sheet seven is section D, shared service agreements, in detail. And that gets subtotald forward to 11. All the sections get subtotald to 11. It's been that way for 40 years.
That's the principal and interest?
Correct.
And then we'll go to, there's more, but blank pages, no more questions I can ask on anticipated revenues. Appropriations. Appropriations is what we're going to...
What's sheet number?
Is that correct?
What's sheet number? What's that?
Is sheet number seven? Appropriation. Well, I'm going to section of the budget of appropriations. I'm done with anticipated revenue.
Page 13, sir.
And you give a page. I'm going to the beginning. The first page is under general administration.
Right.
Now, that's different. The other budget, we've always had the manager's office and all. What is this now?
This is the...
This is the terminology.
This is the Division of Local Government Services, Flexible Charter Accounts, Official Titles. None of that old-fashioned stuff anymore. That's all gone.
All right, so they changed the terminology.
You have to use the updated charter accounts. Manager is not an acceptable.
That's right, it's a no. So general administration would include the manager's office?
Correct.
And the council members' staff?
No, council is mayor council. 20, 1/10.
Okay. So under general administration, which includes the manager's office, why do we have, we're going from 167,000 to 365,000, more than 198,000 dollar increase?
Well, because the celebration of public events got moved to the manager's jurisdiction.
An extra 198,000?
200,000 dollars.
Of public events?
Yep. That's, excuse me, we spend that every year. It just got moved to that whole thing. It was not a new 200,000. It was part of recreation.
And we moved from the Recreation Department?
Yeah, and a couple of other places, and it's all consolidated into the Management Department where it belongs.
All right, let's go to page 13. Computerized data processing.
Right.
It's all computers. We're going to save us money, but we're going from 176,000 in '22 to 600,000 in '23. 424,000 dollar increase. Why did that?
It's not an increase. It's another movement or reclassification. It moved all of the IT, all of the IT, the phones, the voice, the digital. All the IT got moved into this department now. All the copy machines, everything that's... Has to do with anything that's IT. It's all combined now. It's beyond me. I'm all within this. Councilman Gragian can add it through the chair.
If I may, through the mayor?
Sure. So, Mr. Frank Tantoni, so in years past, the IT used to be spread across all different cost centers, if you will. Now it's being consolidated to one and managed by one. That's...
Each department used to have its own IT number.
Right, right, right. Now it's all coming to one, which will be managed by one.
And the cost could be lower now.
All right, I noticed they've changed, so who did they change? Did the state DCA change the format of the budget?
No, she approved it. I did.
You've changed the format of the budget?
To be in compliance with the department DCA's format.
Well, it's more confusing because we don't have the specific line items that we can compare with, so.
Oh, that's close as possible.
You didn't do the citizen a favor.
That's close as possible, it's got to have compliance.
I don't want to use the term hiding, but I will. So. All right, let's go to line seventeen.
Page seventeen.
Page seventeen. Gasoline.
Hold it, no, sir.
Seventeen, sir.
Page seventeen. Okay. In twenty twenty one and parts in twenty twenty two, looking at my gas receipt for my truck, we were paying about five dollars a gallon for gas. Last year, twenty two, it had come down considerably. So why do we have for this year? Last year, twenty two, two hundred and fifty thousand. And we're anticipating appropriating four hundred and twenty five thousand for this year gasoline.
I'm not certain what receipts you have, but our receipts, we are low, under budgeted in gasoline and diesel. And that's the projection.
Eighteen, page eighteen. It's over expenditure, three hundred thousand. What was that over expenditure for?
We have a, we have a, that's going to be amended out if we don't have it. I just put that in place there because there were some, so many last year. So when the division finishes its review, if we had, if they reclassify something, I want something built in here so it doesn't cause a problem. So I might make up the three hundred.
What was that item?
It's nothing specific, it's a plugged amount, that if they find something that gets reclassified, causes no expenditure, I'm already ahead of the game, three hundred thousand. It will be amended out if nothing is in there.
So that also turn into surplus if we don't need it?
It will be surplus, it will be adjusted somewhere else.
Well, where, if we don't need it, where can I go?
If I get, if I get five changes from the division to say up here, down here, I will move it, use it where it needs to be. Understand? This is in here as a placeholder.
Okay, so if you don't need it, you're either going to put it into another department, another line item.
It's going to go into another account.
So.
I said that, right?
You're building a surplus.
That's not building a surplus. It may be needed in another account.
It's fancy bookkeeping here. And the public has no way of knowing what's going on. Also, the page twenty.
Sheet twenty?
Under pilots.
Right.
It's got for six oh eight Mill Street A. Two thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars, six oh eight Mill Street B. Two thousand forty four, Levin Franklin. Nine thousand two hundred sixty one, and Belmont Avenue, twenty four thousand nine fifteen. Now, this is appropriations, appropriations means spending. What, what is this?
What's the top line say?
So pilots.
No, the top line says Essex County, five percent portion of pilots spending. We have to give the county five percent of every pilot revenue we receive.
Well, that's the portion, the county's portion.
Right.
And the general appropriations. Once again, we've got a big increase, about eleven million increase. Since the mayor took office in this town. And he keep bringing about less employees, so I don't see this saving everybody. And in the municipal finance budget, there's a, again, a little piece of paper flew to my attention. It's a memo sent to a contractor from a town employee. And quote, it says, forgive me, as I am new to municipal finance and I'm still learning. This employee, I have to understand, was hired at eighty five thousand dollars. In three months, he gets a twenty five thousand dollar raise, twenty five thousand, and I believe it's a relative of the mayor. So is that piece of paper I got accurate? This employee in the finance department?
That's not the same actually.
It's nothing to do with the budget.
You could ask that question later if you want to.
Because it's an extra twenty five thousand dollars that was put in the budget. To pay him, it's an increase in the salary.
It works, I mean, every single employee gets contractual obligations, employees get steps, employees get bumps, it's, there's certainly not just one, we wouldn't want a single one person out.
Well, me, I understand, is a relative of yours. Any other employee getting twenty five thousand dollar raise in three months?
I don't do the hiring, nor do I do the raises.
Okay, well, anyone to put that on the record? Thank you.
Anybody else, Ms. Fleishman? So as Ms. Fleishman comes up, I just, I should have done a better job, maybe given a summary, so the, I did say before the budget was eighty eight dollars, I believe it's ninety eight dollars. I will say that myself, the deputy mayor and councilman Cazarelli are the budget committee. We met exhaustively with not only the CFO, township manager, we even hauled in department heads at one point. So this was a long time process. I will also say that we were on time with our budget introduction this year, which I remember times when we didn't introduce until August or September. We were on time. And I will end with this, we are doing it a little differently than normal. Normally, this public hearing happens months from now, after the state has finally reviewed our budget. We might make some changes to that introduced budget at that time, and then we have the public hearing, and we immediately go to adoption. So we are not going to adoption right now because the state still has our budget. So we are doing it a little differently. Usually, the public hearing is the same, that is the adoption. Rather, we're having the public hearing now, getting it out of the way, as long as the state comes back with no or minor changes, it'll end up in a resolution in some future meeting to just adopt, and this is the public hearing for that. Am I saying that? Ms. Fleishman?
Good evening, Carmella Fleishman, thirty three Main Street. Okay, Mr. Frantantoni, I did get a lot of them. First of all, God bless you all for reading this. After a few minutes of me, I'm thinking, I need a drink, I don't drink.
You tried writing.
Yeah, seriously. I can imagine, I can imagine, we're going to check you into AA, seriously. I see a lot of, like, on sheet thirteen.
Hold on.
Yep. Under the appropriations.
Okay.
Where it was the treasury office, it was ninety eight thousand dollars last year, it's blank this year. Are a lot of these been, for lack of a better term, reclassified in different departments?
The mayor's direction was to, wanted to find this department restructured in its entirety, if it's done, and a lot of reclassification, once reclassification has been done for purposes of efficiency, for example, the IT. I didn't, myself didn't realize how much better pricing we're going to get when all of this stuff is priced together.
Right.
So rather than being thirteen different departments.
It's six.
We have, we have it under one, and we go out and buy a boat.
Correct. Okay. Next. No, that's right. Again, there's like under the police department, there's like one point two million.
That was, that was strictly a COVID separation, we needed to show, that's gone now, is.
What is a uniform fighter sheet?
All right, the Uniform Fire Safety Act? Was implemented probably in eighty two, somewhere around that, I was in high school. They, it's, everybody, every municipality has to have a fire marshal, used to call them the fire marshals.
Okay.
Call them the uniform fire safety official now. So you have to have it to fire suppression, so, or protection. So what happens is, it needs to be self sustaining when the law came in. So between the state aid and the local enforcement fees, and they go to business to business, they do inspection.
Right.
That revenue has to support the department.
Yeah.
And it does. So you can't, the, the public, the taxes can't supplement the department, it has to be self sustaining.
Okay. There's a lot of, oh, again, there's a lot of pages, and again, I'm not going to go through everything, but there is on twenty four, I think it was, actually, we'd start at.
Hold on, let me get that.
Yep.
Eighteen, you want to start?
Eighteen, we'll start. Okay.
Ready?
Can you get you a little rubber things with the papers?
My kids, let's go again. Okay, yeah.
Okay, the general appropriations, under the appendatures, the approved reserve, so that was a hundred and sixty, so there's nothing left in the reserve?
No, that was an over expenditure that they had.
Jeans?
They, they spent more than was in the line.
Oh, okay. Yeah, like I said, there's a lot of, so these numbers are not set in stone yet, you're still waiting to hear?
Well, we, we have a division review, and we're still adding things ourselves, so it's subject to an amendment.
Okay. Because like on page twenty four.
Yes.
Like that entire?
The grants are coming in, certainly in one resolution itself.
Oh, I see, oh, I see, matching funds.
We have a lot of grants this year, so we're bringing the wall in in one shot.
Oh, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. Now, since, I can't get this paper, computerized world, seventeen thousand piece of paper. I saw somewhere along the way, an overage, oh, here, no. It is on the budget message. Got one page?
I have one bottom there.
Sheet three B.
Okay.
All right, so where it says over or under appropriation cap, nine hundred and thirty four thousand, what exactly is that?
That means our, the maximum allowable amount that we're allowed to go to for spending purposes isn't at that amount, we're nine hundred thousand below that.
Oh, so you're, if you're, as an example, if the cap is five billion dollars, as an example, you're nine hundred thousand below the cap of what you can spend.
Right, and this gets banked for two years, so you can, whatever you're under, it gets reserved for the next two budget years, and then it falls off.
Okay, so like I said, it seems like a lot of it is just shifting numbers, not shifting, I shouldn't say shifting, but properly putting the.
Reorganizing.
Gasket, okay, thank you.
I will say, as I keep adding notes to this budget hearing, though, we do have a brand new CFO, his first, first, not full year with us, was his first budget, so there are things that are now becoming more in line with the state expects, as opposed to traditionally, our auditor prepares it, has done the same thing for forty years. It's basically getting a breath of fresh air on that. Anybody else, motion? Okay.
Sheet ninety five Bell Street. Um, a few simple questions. On the first page, you have here, forty four employees are no longer receiving benefits. Yes, the very first page, that's why I put everything in order so you don't have to fix around for it.
Instead of receiving benefits, forty four employees, that's right.
Okay, so if sixty six thousand dollars savings, that comes out to about fifteen thousand dollars a person?
Fifteen hundred.
Oh, so how much, okay, so what are you, you giving them back fifteen hundred for not taking?
If they, if they opt out, if their spouse has coverage, we have to offer them a cash and look.
Okay, so that's, okay, that's.
The spouse is covered.
Yeah, so you're giving them cash and a benefit.
We have to.
So actually, the savings are a lot more when you add it up, if you want it to score on, okay, that sounds reasonable. Just think I couldn't find in the budget, as of today, what is our total bond obligation? What do we owe?
We'll find that there. Did I give it to you?
Yeah, you did.
You know what, I got it right there, I'm sorry. All right, there.
Here.
Thank you.
Mario.
Okay, you're local.
What do you want us to say next?
This is twelve thirty one twenty two, which is the same number as going into tonight.
Right, right, just as of today, as of today.
Going into tonight's meeting, local owner, in the water, two million nine ninety seven, nine ninety eight.
That's a bond, right, that's a bond.
Those are serial bonds.
Right, serial, okay, yeah.
And we have full deduction for those, because we're self liquidating, that means our statutory debt is zero. The general is forty one million, four ten, eight hundred and forty six cents. We have credits of twelve million, six ninety nine, oh, forty, which represents the shared service agreement receivable from the board of ed.
Okay.
And about seven hundred thousand dollars cash on hand to pay debt. So our statutory debt is down to twenty eight, seven eleven, seven sixty.
Right, right, okay, that's reasonable.
Just, um.
And I'm sorry, mayor, just for our clarification, so you said thirty thousand, twenty thousand debt?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight. Uh, we have, but last I checked, our bottom of the past, it was a hundred and twenty five million, I'm sure it's gone up since then. So percentage wise, we're actually in really good shape.
Okay, sheet number five. Just the consolidating, I assume the number is going to be the same, you have four hundred and thirty two thousand dollars?
No, it's not going to be the same, they changed the state aid, let me just, if you can give me one second, I might have a printout from them, let me share it, but.
Where am I going?
We get notified early, and then it's subject to change later on, but I think. Yeah, they changed our funding formula, that's going to be, that's a zero, so exactly the way that.
That's a zero right now?
That's the state aid you're going to get, we're going to get, that's a zero, they changed it.
So they've given us less?
They've given you less. Yeah, and there's a certification to that, that he's had.
Okay. So we're going to move on to the next page, which I think I got the answer.
Yeah.
Sheet nine eighty nine B, there, Mr. Frantantoni, all the blanks, so I'm, I'm under the assumption that some of it, the money you're getting, and some you may be forthcoming by the end of the year?
We have a large list of grants, and we just could not get the list together by the time for introduction, so we are going to amend for grants.
I understood that quite well.
And there are, there's going to be many pages of grants.
Okay. That's fine. But sheet number twelve? What's financial administration now they're changing something, something a lot? Because I see the budget going up.
Financial administration, that's my department.
That's your department? They're going up from two oh two to three twenty five, and one oh seven to two seventy five? The very bottom?
Yes, yes, there's a couple of things, in the OE, we, we moved a couple of things into there. We added some internal audit costs, there's some other purchasing, rather than have a postage and tax bills and things that were spread out all over the place, they're all moved into.
So you've said you consolidated more to your department?
If it's something, basically, the rules is going to, now is going to be, if it's something that's utilized, township wide, it's going to run through finance central. So all the financial software, all this stuff, rather than being spread into, are going to run through.
But that's the purpose of the increase in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. Go on to sheet thirteen.
Yeah.
What's revenue with administration?
That's tax collector.
That's the tax collector.
Correct.
All right, see, they're going up too, from two eighty eight to seven?
Correct.
What's the purpose of that?
There was a, there was a, a lower step employee that was transferred out of there early on, and there was a higher one that came from upstairs down, down to, like, the finals, it's a tax collector.
Right, okay. And DPW is going up again, that's.
Just, give me the page.
Fifteen, fifteen B. Actually, you've got a reserve though, that's forty eight thousand, they, they, now. Paid or charged?
Yeah, yeah, are you talking about the fire department?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Streets and road maintenance, fifteen B?
Let me get that, hold on. Three hundred, yeah. That's the one you're looking at?
You have fifteen B, top one.
Oh, two twenty five.
It's a, paid or charged, three fifty nine, and now it's being, for twenty twenty three, it's four seventy?
Yes.
With forty eight circled.
Yes, there was something we moved, we moved, something I moved into, I don't remember what the top of my head, but something I moved into there as well.
So basically, what I'm seeing here, you moved a lot, you're doing more consolidation of departments?
Lighthouse ones that we can buy better.
Right.
You can't, it's very difficult to purchase when the purchasing is decentralized, if it's all under one place, it makes it a lot easier.
Okay. And the last one, recreation departments, two forty four.
I'm sorry, can you just give me sheet number you're looking at?
Fifteen B.
Delta?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was, I see a big jump there, but I know we're charged.
Yes, what happened, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you. This recreation department, recreation service, the separation is eliminated, it's recreation now. One department with the, with the.
So the departments are all combined together, or?
They were all, to begin with, I don't know, it was budget unnecessarily separate like this.
So you hadn't?
It's consolidated, recreation is one.
That's still the same number?
Same numbers combined.
Fine. Sixteen, the last one. You've got other expenses on the.
Let me just play with it.
Page sixteen, other expenses going up from twenty eight to one twenty five for construction.
Yes, yes, yes. They had, um. It was a request, a specific request, it might be a software, a, a software upgrade, there was specific that department, and need an upgrade. That wasn't, that, that was something that couldn't be centralized.
Okay. That's fine, thank you.
Anybody else from public, public hearing? Yes.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, forty seven Floyd Street. I missed the very beginning part of Mario's Q and A, so if I repeat anything, I apologize in advance. Before I get into specific numerical details with this budget, for my edification, could you please tell me when and where the legal notice for this hearing was published? I'm curious, have you been ready?
Star Ledger, June first.
All right. I have a.
Get over that. I can see it now, it's got over. That's the affidavit, publication signed by the Star Ledger.
All right. I'll, I'll be submitting the offer for this later tonight, thank you. So according to NJPublicNotices.com, the only budget notice published by the town hall was the one back in April sixth, when you introduced the budget. NJ Public Notices is almost a hundred percent reliable for them to have dropped this, particular notice doesn't make much sense. But we will see, and I will deal with the DCA accordingly. First budgetary question, this is page seven, a little bit redundant, because I know this has already been brought up.
Sheet seven?
Sheet seven, yes, sheet seven, sheet seven. This is the revenues from the board of ed.
Okay.
And this is already discussed, but I want to add something more, ask another question here. The, the principal is one million, one hundred ninety thousand. The interest is two hundred ninety seven thousand, five hundred dollars. This is for the eleven point nine million dollar shared service fund ordinance passed by the council last April.
That's right.
Bond note sold last July.
That's right.
I'm aware of the fact, because I think I opened this earlier this year, that five million of that eleven point nine million dollars has already been transferred to the board of ed to facilitate the purchase of the former Eastern International College. And actually, Dr. Tomko and the business administrator, Mr. Palladino, last week's meeting acknowledged that they had received the five million, but there's an outstanding balance of six point nine million dollars. So my question to you, if it's, if it's fairly transparent here, where is that six point nine million dollars?
Improvement authorization is in general capital fund.
Right.
That's what the spending, this is the debt. The spending authorization is in general capital fund, improvement authorization. You could request that.
All right. And, and that six point nine million dollars, is that in an interest bearing account right now, are you making any, any income with that?
We can't, we can't make it, it's arbitrage, you can't make money on borrowed funds.
All right, all right, I just wanted to know if that was possible.
No, no, you're not allowed to do that.
Since you're retaining that, that money, then not the board of ed?
They're not allowed to do that.
All right, okay, thank you, thank you. Let's see. Next question, I'll give you a chance to flip over, this is pay, oh, sheet thirty two. This is the dedicated water utility budget.
Okay.
So under the very first section, operating salary and wages.
I'm sorry, hold on.
The very much, yeah, sheet thirty, sheet thirty two. The very first section, salaries and wages, for twenty twenty three, listed as seven, seven hundred thirty thousand dollars, it's down a little bit from last year, you had seven hundred ninety four thousand. So nice to see a little bit of reduction there, but my question is, for the salary and wages, can you tell me how many employees are represented here by the seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
If I have it handy, I can let you know that.
Perhaps Mr. Iaccone would know?
Eight?
Eight, eight employees, sorry, thank you. And, and then this section, in the next section, it says financial administration, so does the eight employees include?
No.
So that's, that would be a nine?
That's finance and tax that, that overlaps, that, that does that work, so twenty five percent of their time is spent on water, so that gets charged back and remitted to current.
All right, okay.
They're not full time water employees.
All right, okay, thank you for that. That brings me to my next question, under the insurance section. Under the insurance section, food plan for employees, last year it was 463,125. This year it's 475,000. So if you have eight employees in this department, and this is their insurance, that doesn't really seem to make sense. Because it's my understanding that even the, for the family plan, it's roughly 30,000 a year. If you have eight employees at 30,000, that would be 240. So why, why is the insurance for this particular department?
It's not just the health, it's the dental, it's the vision, it's the, it's all the items. You focus on one item. You need to add all the benefits together.
Right, but that.
Plus, plus the, the social security, the pen, all, all the fringe benefits are in that number.
All right, but that still comes to, what, something like 60 to 70,000 for?
It's 62,000 average.
All right. All right. Thank you for that. I wasn't aware that it was that, that much per, per employee. When, at the last meeting, and everyone had a good laugh at my expense, I had, I had heard of the fact that you had had a resolution to raise the 121 million dollars through informing the tax collector.
All right, you missed the county portion.
And I forgot the county portion. And that was about 17, 17 million dollars. When I scanned through the budget, the one that's been made available to us, I couldn't find a line item per se that shows what portion the county is getting from this budget.
No, the, the county does, is a separate budget. And they submit their own, their own levy, just like the school submits a separate, and their A4F. And they give, they also submit a county open space number.
Okay.
That's not part, the only one that's incorporated in here is the library.
All right, all right.
Free public library, that's it. Everyone else is separate, and they certify those numbers directly to the county.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. Always learning new things each, at least, Mr. Maria. The next thing I wanted to question, and actually, we'd all be relieved to know that this is probably the last thing I'm going to be asking tonight. The purchase of water section, for 2022, it's listed at 4,900,000. Nice, beautiful whole number.
Oh, oh, it's like.
Sheet 32. It's on sheet 32, at the very bottom, where under other.
Right.
It says purchase of water, purchase of water?
Yeah, I see, I see.
Right. So for 2022, you've listed 4,900,000, a beautifully whole number, which kind of always gets me suspicious when you're making a purchase and it comes with so many zeros in it. And then for this year, you're projecting 5,500,000. So last year, it was 4,900,000.
I mean, I want to, but you don't forget, they had, they had apparently a back bill with a situation when Newark for 700,000 right below. The sum of the two being 5.6 compared to 5.5, a lower number.
Right.
They would have, they would have had to, I don't know, it was before my time, but they apparently had, apparently had a back bill situation. And meters to go out, and they don't get bills for months, so I didn't have a situation here recently. So they must have had a significant situation last year. So to do your, your comparison, you would have, I would add the two together to get it more accurate.
Well, the one thing that I've been trying to reconcile, if you go back to the number that's posted here for 2022, 4,900,000. Earlier this year, I offered all of the water payments to Newark for 2022. And with the back payments and everything else here, you know, several pages long. But the total here for 2022, according to your own financial records, is not 4,900,000. It's 440,600 and 7 cents.
440,000?
About 4,440,600 and 7 cents. That, that is almost 460,000 less. It's 459,399, 93 cents less than this 4,900,000 dollar.
Do you know where you got the, the number that you're comparing you to, where you got the front?
I'll give, I'll forward this to you tonight. This is what I offered. It's several pages long, but the whole of the.
It might not, that, I have the feeling that might not be all inclusive, because a couple of payments were made online.
Okay.
And might not have rolled up in that report. I would have to look that myself.
I would appreciate it if you could help me reconcile this, because this is.
Just I'll make sure, what are your parents, so I can answer your question. But it's possible that there are payments that did not roll up in that report that you have in your hand.
All right.
I'm guessing that's a problem.
Tomorrow, I will send you a separate email, if you could help me reconcile this, because I, you know, I do see nearly a 460,000 difference.
Send me that thing, give me what you have, so I don't worry about it.
I will, I'll send you this, and hopefully, before the end of the week, we'll both be in agreement of what the true water costs were. We'll be happy to know that, that's the last question I have for tonight.
Thank you, anybody else from public comment? Anybody on the phone from public comment? I'll adjourn to motion close.
So who, second?
The motion made and second to close the public hearing for the 2023 municipal budget. Mr. Corral?
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Parry?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stoneberg?
Yes.
And Mayor Mollhan?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the report of the manager.
Mayor and council, good evening. Going to forego a detailed report tonight, certainly be available for questions, and that may come from the floor. But I will just say this, Monday is our first day of summer camp. I know we've had a lot of conversations about it. Happy to report, we have 175 paid hampers. So there was a question of, you know, charging fees. We actually have more hampers this year, and we're charging 50 dollars a week, and the real estate average is 200 dollars a week. But we're charging 50 dollars a week. We have 175 hampers ready to go on Monday. We're going to provide lunch, and maybe even breakfast. We have three, maybe four field trips scheduled. And we have approximately 40, 40 camp counselors working either eight to four or four to eight. So it's, it's going to be an exciting program. I know there's a lot of excitement about this program, and I know this was something that the mayor and council wanted this year, and I'm happy to report that. I think we're going to have a great year.
Any questions for the manager?
Yeah, through, through the chair, just one quick one, Anthony. You and I talked about this earlier in the week, and I see there's like two more of these block parties. And one of the things we used to do with the block parties is to make sure that all the neighbors were notified, and that there was like a written consent form, so at least they knew it was coming. Because as you saw with that one email, that woman felt very slighted that she didn't know the party was happening.
I, I totally understand. I mean, I think our biggest problem was that there's music after midnight, which again, she waited until midnight to call. Please, you should have called at, you know, I think it's the ordinances, either nine or 10. But I guess going forward, if we want to require, the mayor and council want to require that the person requesting the block party give out a flyer to the neighbors. I mean, it's all about policing. I was at that block party. I can tell you that the homeowners went not only on that block, but on other blocks. I can also tell you that flyers were taped to telephone poles.
Yeah, but they used to submit, at one point in time, they used to submit a list that they went around and got people to sign off, because that, that was something we used to do. I don't know if we, I don't think we do it anymore.
I don't, I don't believe we do that now. You know, sometimes we get a petition, like I did. But if people sign, they want it, not that they.
Yeah, no, but they're, they're kind of signing off in a sense, but.
I mean, I think the police department is more than capable, if it's loud noise, if it's 10 o'clock, and call them up. They come and shut it down.
Anything else?
No, I'm good.
No? Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda, number 10, report of the mayor, so I'm going to start just some past events. We did have a great Juneteenth celebration at the Belleville Public Library. On Saturday, that was followed by the now infamous block party that was being hosted. I attended that, I attended that block party, like I said, I, I know the organizers, I know Mr. Plus very well. And I know for a fact that they went door to door, and that's why they had such a great turnout. I also physically saw the flyer posted on the telephone pole. If you look at my social media posts from that day, it's a picture of the flyer posted to the black pole. Last Tuesday, I had hosted a pizza party for Tuesday Senior Club. It was a summer kickoff pizza party. And the weekend before that, I hosted a hot dog party for the Friday Senior Club. Moving on to upcoming events, we have a big, big week ahead of us. Next Monday, July 3rd, will be our fireworks. We start 6 o'clock at night at the stadium for family fun. We have a DJ, we have inflatables, we have games. So children, parents with children bring them by at 6 o'clock. Fireworks, as always, start at dusk. Our fireworks are very well-known. I would get to the stadium nice and early to get yourself a seat. I would really encourage you to walk or bike or ride chair, because parking is going to be eliminated, or our police department is going to have several streets blocked off in that vicinity. The next day is our traditional Independence Day in Belleville. We start out with yoga in the park, that's going to be Belleville Park. There's a 9:45 warm-up. Special thanks to Signature Fitness for providing Michelle for us. We'll be a 45-minute session starting at 10 a.m. And after that, at 11 o'clock, we all come down to the Dutch Reform Church, whereby there's always a ceremony to read off and acknowledge the names of those 60-plus veterans who fought in the Revolutionary War from Belleville. Yours truly will also be crashing barbecues. Any new barbecues this year? I usually decide who's got the best food, and we make our schedule from there. So from 2 to 6, crashing barbecues. There's only one council meeting in July, remember? That's going to be sort of the middle of the month, it's going to be July 11th. July 13th, the Essex County Clerk's Office will be in Belleville for passport and notary service. Information will soon be available on township website. It is by appointment, they do have the information on their website. July 13th begins our summer entertainment series. We call it summer entertainment, because it's just not concerts. It's concerts basically every single Thursday starting July 13th. The first concert is going to be the Infernos, they are a big-time local band. And then after that, every single Thursday throughout July and August, a concert. And we do have two movies this year. Movies are on a Wednesday, there's one in July, the 26th, Super Mario Brothers for Kids. And there's one in August 30th for Top Gun. As always, we conclude our summer entertainment series with the last Thursday in August, which is Thursday the 31st. A great, great country band coming in, Big Hicks, and that will also be another firework celebration. So looking forward to this. In August, keep, keep looking forward to a motor vehicle mobile event that's going to be coming back to Belleville. Soon we'll be announcing the exact date. Let's just see here, just some quick news. Today, the manager and I, along with many, many departments, did a walkthrough of the stadium to go through some of our plans for this coming Monday. We are expecting a big turnout. Pickleball remains a huge hit. Our two sessions are currently sold out. We are working with Pro Andy to hit some more dates. Summer camp, as you heard from manager, has exceeded expectations. Also on the agenda today, the final resolution on the agenda today, you heard last week when we had our students here. We had a very good recommendation from one of our students. They heard some debate back and forth between the police chief and members of the council. It wasn't a debate, it was a conversation about ATVs and dirt bikes going down the street. And we basically both sides, the chief and, and the councilor, explained to the general public how handcuffed we usually are. This young, bright student had an idea that we pass a resolution in a future meeting, and send that resolution to our state legislation, our state legislators, including the governor's office. So there is a, not strongly, but sternly-written resolution asking them for their help and their support. And we're hoping that that gets sent to them. Last, check out our library, we have great programs happening all through the summer, including ESL. That's it for my mayor's report. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have the combined conference and regular meeting of June 13th, 2023. The motion?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion we made, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Parry?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stoneberg?
Yes.
And Mayor Mollhan?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is communications. Want to read it, Mr. Clerk? How we do this? You do it or I do it?
You've been doing it, you've been doing a great job.
You're doing a great job. So we have communications. A, we have assistant attorney RFQ results we're in. B, we have the cancellation of the reorganization meeting. C, we have Jennifer Capitelli, a resident of 123 Belmar Street, is requesting to host a block party on July 22nd, 2023, at the rain date of July 23rd, from 3 to 11 p.m., from Graylock Parkway to Overlook Avenue. We have Rokal Joseph is requesting to host a block party on July 3rd, from 7 to 10 p.m., on 13 Hill Street to 31 Hill Street. We have a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Pagan of 235 Division Avenue. Oh, this is a good one, I remember getting this one. This was a resident from 235 Division Avenue praising Officer Louis Rivera, badge number 328, and Officer Vanessa, badge 333, as exemplary, as exemplary officers who care deeply about the community they are serving. I received a copy of that letter, and the chief received one. I often get complaints of municipal employees, whether it's fleas, fire, DPW staffers here. It's always great when we get residents that actually take the time to write a letter commending officers. So chief, I'm sure you will put that in their personnel folder, hopefully. And it was, I actually read that letter, it was pretty thorough, it was very hard for me. F, we have Nile Live German is requesting to host a community barbecue and festivities on July 4th, from 12 to 10 p.m., at 90 Rossmore Place, between Hornblower and DeWitt. And then we have the Peruvian Roots United is requesting a flag raising for Friday, July 7th at noon. Those are all communications that we have received. Next, we are moving forward with ordinances for possible adoption. We have ordinance 17-23, ordinance for possible adoption. And ordinance to amend revised general ordinance of Township Belleville, Essex County, New Jersey, chapter 8-16, entitled Handicap Parking Spaces. We need to open public commenting for that.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Parry?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stoneberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mollhan?
Yes, we are open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll ask, is anybody on the phone? Hearing none. I'll adjourn to motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
The motion made and second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Parry?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stoneberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mollhan?
Yes. Next, we have ordinance 18-23, ordinance for possible adoption. And ordinance of Township Belleville to acquire by negotiated agreement an interest in real property located at 211 Washington Avenue and designated as block 7701, block 21, the official tax map of the Township Belleville, Essex County, New Jersey, for public parking and related uses. I need a motion to open public commenting.
Motion.
The motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
O'Parry?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Stoneberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. We are now open for public commenting on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Mr. Frank Antoni.
I'm happy to see we finally get some public parking on Washington Avenue. This is the animal hospital over there. It's a parking, what are the related uses?
That might be standard language. I know that we fully intend on using it for parking. That lot is the perfect size for a lot being 60 feet wide, so you can get parking on the left and the right hand side, which doubles the amount of parking. I know we're gonna meter it. I'm not quite sure what the related uses entail. Could be just legal language.
And what's the price? What are we talking about, dollars?
We did the same parking station, that's the...
No, you mean the acquisition price?
Yes.
I believe it's 600 and change?
650,000.
I'm sorry.
650,000. That's what he ordered.
650?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else this ordinance and this ordinance only? Mr. Sheldon.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Polat Street. Mr. Frank Antoni and Mr. Mellon acknowledge that this is the current little animal hospital in Washington. But this is also the building right next to the library. So this would be, I think this is a great addition to the township. We're gonna finally have convenient parking next to our public library, something that has been woefully missing for 100-plus years.
I agree with you.
All right, so kudos to you. This is actually, I'm glad you're doing this. Looking forward to this, thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, seeing none. I'm sorry, I'm on the phone. Hearing none. I'll adjourn any motion to close and move for final adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance 21-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sanitary source system in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $250,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $235,000 in bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Next, yeah, no public hearing. Orders 22-23, ordinance for introduction. Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility system in and by the township of Belville, county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $250,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $235,000 in bonds or notes of township to finance the costs thereof. Need a motion to introduce?
Second.
We have a motion made and second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance 23-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road reconstruction and curb and sidewalk replacement program in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $1 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $264,000 in bonds or notes to the township to finance part of the construction thereof. Need a motion to introduce?
Second.
We have a motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. So next, ordinance 24-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road reconstruction and curb and sidewalk replacement program in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $475,000 in bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the construction thereof. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second.
The motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance 25-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the improvements to municipal facilities in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $500,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $475,000 with the bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs therefore. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
The motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. It'll be fun, second reading. Ordinance 26-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road reconstruction and curb and sidewalk replacement program in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $3.3 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of 2.6... 200, $2,610,000 with the bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the construction thereof. Motion to introduce?
Motion.
We have a motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance 27-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road reconstruction and curb and sidewalk replacement program in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $650,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $352,000 with the bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs therefore. Need a motion to introduce?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance 28-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the 2023 road reconstruction and curb and sidewalk replacement program in and by the township of Belville in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $2,750,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $2,080,000 with the bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
The motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Ordinance 29-23, ordinance for introduction. A bond ordinance providing for the acquisition and improvement of real property located at 211 Washington Avenue in and by the township of Belville, county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $1 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $950,000 with the bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the costs thereof. Make a motion.
Second.
The motion made and second to introduce. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Last one. Ordinance 30-23, ordinance for introduction. An ordinance to amend the salary ordinances creating personnel positions and adopting classification and compensation plans. Before we introduce, I would like to amend, or like to amend this ordinance on introduction. We are adding two part-time positions that have always been. We just call them something different. We are adding OEM coordinator and deputy OEM coordinator. However, we should also be deleting the two titles that are for the same exact dollar amount that we do not use. So I would like to amend this ordinance prior to introduction to also delete the title Deputy Municipal Disaster Control Director, part-time, and delete the title Municipal Disaster Control Director, part-time. I believe, Mr. Clerk, do you have the exact wording of those in front of you? So when we actually go for second here, for second reading, we'll be deleting these two, which are $10,000 each, and we'll be adding the correct... It's the county OEM wants it as OEM coordinator, OEM deputy coordinator. We do have coordinator. We have two deputies. I do not receive any payment for that. So we're deleting two for $10,000 each, and we're adding two for $10,000 each. It's an even swap.
It'll be published in that way, for purposes of the second reading.
Okay. So we're good with that, Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Township Attorney?
You do it before you introduce it, yes.
All right, so now we're gonna entertain a motion to introduce as amended. As amended.
So move second.
The motion made and second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, next item on our agenda is the public commenting. Need a motion to open public commenting.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second to open public commenting. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Sobel?
Yes.
Strombel Burke?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes, we are now at the public commenting portion of the meeting, whereby residents can stand up and speak on any topic that they want. We really do hope and sincerely appreciate they keep it to municipal government business. With that said, please raise your hand when I call upon you. You have five, I'm gonna ask you to stand, come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes. Mr. Jones?
I'm Charles 95 Bell Street. On the consent agenda, I guess, there's number G. What kind of service is that? It just says, open, you know. All right, G, you can answer that for me. And J, what's confusing here is approval to submit application for a grant to NJ, New Jersey Department of Transportation. Greenwich Street, Berkeley Avenue, and Floyd Place. What the heck are they? I've never heard of them. I mean Floyd Street, we have, I know we're, Greenwich is over here, but where? It's Berkeley Avenue, Belville. I'm still confused here. So I'm gonna move on.
It's actually I now.
Yeah.
That's I.
You said G, it's I, not J.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm gonna get it back. The letter G is first, and then the letter J.
When you say just first, what does that mean as first? I know G comes before.
G, yeah, what is that?
You have a question?
Yeah, question you have, what is that?
Submit a application for pedestrian rail. See, there are... Mr. Ikonah? I'm assuming Mr. Harretts can answer if he was here. We do an annual pedestrian safety project. Sometimes we get a grant for it, sometimes we don't.
Okay, that's the letter G we're talking about.
That's G.
Yeah, G, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Cosarelli, quick.
Thank you, man. The one for the rail pedestrian safety project. We already got phase one and phase two funding. Now we're going for phase three, which is at the Silver Lake Train Station.
Okay.
Basically, streetscape. This is a fancy word for a streetscape.
Okay, what about the letter J? Is that J the same thing?
I.
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 I know, J.
No, no, that's a different one. No, I think that's just for the street.
J.
That's just the Great Lawn.
J is the Great.
Great Lawn.
Totally different.
I don't want I, I want J.
J is the Great Lawn.
I think you have an alter.
I is, I is the...
You don't have first, updated in the...
But the letter J says approval to submit app...
I think you have the alter.
Where's mine different?
Yeah, yours is different.
Okay, you know what it is?
As I say, I knew you had the wrong one.
I have the one online, I printed out, okay. That's the confusion, okay.
All right, so let's still try and answer. Well, what is your... Let's get some...
Where are these streets?
Read it while you watch, we'll figure it out. He wants the street.
All right, that's true. Where's Greenwich Street, Berkeley Avenue, and Floyd Place?
Berkeley is by Wendy's, by Wendy's off Franklin Avenue.
Berkeley Avenue, huh?
By Wendy's, it's...
But where's Floyd Place? It's Floyd, Floyd Place.
It's Ford Street.
Ford Street? Oh, is that just the typo there? Okay. Yeah, that's what I was looking at, but Greenwich is right here, right? The side street. All right. That's it? No. Resolution to appointing Tom Rosiano, I'm not gonna read the letter. It says class two, I thought he was a class three. My writer wrong.
I'm one, I think class two is the member of the governing body?
No, it's three.
Three, okay.
The typo. And I've just, you know, I've just seen the typo there, okay?
The three.
So if we can correct that, if you don't mind.
The three.
Now, you don't have any names here. It says resolution reappointing members of the zoning board. Resolution reappointing members of the planning board. Can I have the names, please?
It's everybody that was current. I don't have it in front of me.
Who's on the zoning board and who's on the planning board?
It's everybody that is currently there that was set to expire, is being reappointed.
I don't know who it is.
All right, agreed.
Because normally you used to put names in there, like you have Rosiano's name, but there's no names.
Y and W. Resolution Y, resolution W.
Z and W. It's on the door, it's on Y.
So, for zoning board, we have William Villano as a regular, Gustavo Soriano as a regular, and Attilio Del Gercio Jr. as a regular.
You can't have three regulars. You have two regulars and an alternate. Right now the regulars-
Excuse me, sir. Sir, you can speak next if you like.
You want to get it right?
No, he's providing with an answer. If you want to change that or challenge that, you can speak next.
Okay.
We're not going to have a meeting where people just vote it out.
No, no, okay, I have a problem.
So, how many, so many boards under this?
Uh, there's three up for this time.
There's three up for this term?
Yes, they're all our four-year term.
Okay, who's a, who's a regular and who's an alternate?
I was given that all three were regulars.
They're all regulars, all three?
That's the information I was given.
Okay. What about the planning board now? How many do you have here?
Do you have a resolution number five?
Yeah, resolution 176-2023.
So Gustavo would be, if he were reappointed, Gustavo was the alternate.
This, for the-
Gustavo's currently, currently the first alternate.
Alternate, so if we reappoint him, he becomes the alternate.
So that could be the alternate.
Yeah, we're just on that.
So Gustavo is the alternate?
Yeah.
He should be the alternate.
And for resolution 176, you said?
Yes, 176.
Right, that Lawrence Guillens is being appointed for four years.
Let me ask you something. What is he, a regular or an alternate?
Alternate one.
Okay, I think there was a, there was a, I think somebody named Bobe or something like that resigned. Shouldn't you move an alternate up into a regular member then?
No, he's the second alternate now, is becoming the first.
First, okay, so that's then, but you got the, another-
But we don't have to do that. We just chose it.
No, I know that. And the other, so one more question, which I was wondering about the last one. Aren't you supposed to have a town official as a class two? Because I think you've got Brian Banda, but he, but if he has a title of an engineering aide, but that is not a directorship or, can he legally sit on that board then?
It doesn't say directorship, Mario. It says-
No, I'm just asking. I always thought I had to say-
I know, I get it, but you can't say, the law says town official and he's not a director. Because it's, the law doesn't say director.
But I'm just saying both. But can he?
Yes, he's qualified right now.
I thought it had to be another town official that had, to sit on there. But he's an aide, so I was just wondering if that's legal, that's all.
We believe it is. That's why he was appointed.
Okay, that's why I'm asking.
Anybody else in public comment?
Not me.
Mr. Frank Anton.
For, thanks for cleaning the mold off the building on the entrance there, but I don't think the city-
I actually, I actually didn't do that.
Thanks, Bobby.
I'll take credit.
But last week, once again, I lost track. It's either the fourth or fifth time a trailer has knocked a light pole down on the corner of here of Rutgers Street and Washington Avenue. You make that turn, they knock it down, and all the DOT does is come put it up again. The last time it happened, a couple months ago, I called them up. I said, "Look," and I measured the street. You got the pole on this side by Flower, the old, the thrift shop, and it armed goes out to the middle of the street. Move it on the other side of the street, and it wouldn't do it. So maybe a few people can do it, because right now the pole has just been knocked over four or five times. Much more all my time on Washington, but this past year alone, about five times, are we waiting for somebody to get killed? So far it's just the pole been knocked over. So maybe you guys can put some influence on DOT to have that before someone gets injured or killed. While I was there on the corner talking, one of my friends, one of the merchants there, some guy comes running up and says, "You know where the police department is?" I said, "Yeah, the big building right in the corner." He goes there and he comes back. "That's not the police station. That's a town hall." He's, "I need the police station. I need the police station." And I didn't realize it, but maybe it's right. Can we put a sign, a lighted sign maybe, on Washington Avenue, show an arrow where people can go down? Because that's, they don't see that. And the other thing I keep bringing up, I haven't in a while, about when we do our water replacement, the street repairs are not satisfactory. They keep caving in because they're not filling properly. I didn't realize, there's a lot of people that watch these meetings online. Three of them called me and said, "I heard you a couple months ago. So come and look at my street. It's also caving in after they do a water replacement and not, they're not filling properly." So, I'm going to, through the chair, ask my councilman, Mr. Cosarelli, who's also a fellow contractor, if he can find a half hour, hour to meet with me and go around these streets, and maybe if I physically show him the problem-
I agree with you.
-and get it resolved, you know? And the one lady, it sucks so bad she can't sleep. Cars, every time they go on them, bumble, bumble, wakes them up at night. We're not filling them properly. I, I don't understand why we continue to do and make that definition of insanity come true.
I know it well.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in public comment? Goodness.
Hi, Nancy Blavel, 200 B Street. Between Union Avenue and Washington Avenue, PSCNG, what we call the fields, is putting new towers. And back in the day, that used to be a waterhole. So basically, it was just a clay foundation, waterhole. They used to be able to go swimming. There used to be a roller coaster through there. Okay. Now, with the, with that all being said, it gets flooded back there. So what would happen is all the water would come down Grellah Parkway, and it would go down by Linden Avenue. And then once the fields would get backed up in water, B Street, Floyd, Linden, Fremont would get water. And then also on Grellah Parkway, because that's the way the sewer system would go. We found out that when they were doing the construction there, that the sewer pipe was cracked. So when we had that really bad, bad rainstorm and everybody got flooded out everywhere, that was probably one of the reasons why residents got flooded behind the fields. They threw down enough stone to build a high school, a town hall, and so on and so forth. I'm very, very afraid that by them building there and, not necessarily building up, I get that stone and there's a lot of clay dirt back there. I know, I did an extension on my house. So, with the clay, it absorbs all the water. It has nowhere to go, but I know they threw down stone. I'm just very, very worried that the houses around there, if we get a really bad rainstorm, steady rainstorm, the houses are going to get flooded and we're going to get flooded out, and the homes are going to get ruined. So I'm wondering if maybe possibly you could have maybe an engineering team go down there and see from Belville, to see what they're actually doing. I know PSCNG is exempt from a lot of things, so we're dealing with a powerhouse here.
Sure.
But I'm very, I'm very concerned about the residents around there and our homes.
Thank you.
Then we also will have another problem. With them disturbing the land, the rodents, we got ten groundhogs. Four of them already been killed on Grellah Parkway. Skunks everywhere. I have two very large dogs, and that's all they want to do is go in the backyard and chase after these groundhogs. They're very dangerous. So, and it's not fair to them either. Their habitat's been, so maybe we can get ASA, Human Society down there, maybe capture them and give them a new home, because it's not fair.
So are township managers listening diligently? That was 200 B Street.
B Street, Belville.
So we won't send a team of engineers there, but we'll send our, I'm sure we'll send our township engineers there to take a peek at it.
Yes.
And communicate with PSCNG. You know as well as I do, they could do what they want to do.
Yes, it's a powerhouse.
I will say that the amount of rock that's there is probably to allow drainage and actually probably to help the drainage, but I'm by far no engineer, so.
Yeah.
We'll get him to peek at it, and I also dealt with a groundhog on the loose today. And our health department does have traps, and we do have an exterminator for other types of rodents, so.
But these trees are for us.
You can let Colleen know, and 200 B Street, you can let Colleen know on both of those on, on that one, and Mr. Harris on the other.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Blavel, B-L-A-U-B-E-T.
Maria, wow. Wow, that would be Maria Pollard. Who's that, Mrs. Fleisch?
Good evening, and Carmela Fleisch from 8:30 Main Street. To the mayor and council, I want to thank you for the lovely work that you guys helped with the fencing. It still boggles the mind that they didn't clean before they put the fencing in.
They did clean after they put the fence.
Did you call that clean?
I, so with all the respect-
I said, you said that.
I forward you the email from DOT, and she said, "Let me know if it wasn't satisfactory." I didn't get a response. I did get a response from you, but you didn't say that.
You, you thought that was clean? Really?
I, I, I'm-
You thought, seriously, all that, all that-
I didn't have cross streets. I didn't have anything that you would have, so.
Okay, so I'm telling you-
Want to reply to that email, Laura? I'll forward it.
I'm replying now. From the corner near L.
You gotta, she's on that email.
Okay. Alright, so I-
I'm pretty good at dictation, but I got a lot happening up here right now.
Okay, I will-
You and I are on the email with the state.
I was gonna say, alright, so I will forward that again. So again, that still is atrocious. There's still a ton of garbage-
I did see it yesterday. I thought the same.
That is just ridiculous. That's number one. Number two, the section of Main Street that, oh, sorry, of River Road, when you're coming down from the old Kmart, making that left onto River, like Main Street, where the Aldis is.
Lidl, okay.
Just before you get to the intersection to 21, right near, right near Aldis.
Oh, Lidl, Lidl.
Lidl, sorry. Oh, Aldis, sorry.
Lidl, Lidl.
Yeah, whatever. Alright, is that a two-lane or a one-lane area? Is the street physically supposed to be two lanes or one lane?
Main.
Main Street, is it?
She's not talking about Main, she's talking about Side Street that goes into that. What was Street with everybody? The, the one with the big tarry was?
Terry Street.
Terry Street? Do you remember Terry Street?
No, I'm talking the one, as you come down, as you come down, what, Droneman? As you come down-
Coming down Droneman.
Coming down Droneman, old Kmart.
Yes.
Okay, you make that left.
It's Main Street.
That's Main Street. Okay, where all the stores are.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Is that a two-lane or a one?
I think it's two right there.
It's supposed to be two, but people make it four. People make it two going and make it four.
Well, not even, not even that.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
People make right out of 20.
Not, not even the fact that they make it a four-lane or a two-lane, when you're turning in, they're making it a two-lane right near Lidl, and it's physically not wide enough to become a two-lane. If it is supposed to be a two-lane, it needs to be painted properly. If it's supposed to be a one-lane, it needs to be painted properly. Because I nearly got killed today coming home because a car was coming up off the side where it shouldn't have been. So I would like it painted, please. Thank you.
God, anybody else?
I'd like to show up in the next meetings.
Meeting me again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. For a rare evening, I'm going to bestow a second compliment upon the invite tonight. I'm very relieved to see that you've changed Resolution V, which is the zoning board appointment, to include Mr. Del Gercio. In my opinion, would have been a grievous error for the sake of our community. If Mr. Del Gercio hadn't been appointed, you don't find many people like Mr. Del Gercio with all of the experience and the command of municipal national law that he has, and not to have and continue while he's able to with our zoning board would have just been an injustice to all of us. So thank you for remitting that and reappointing him for another four years. As far, I would be need to talk about one thing with Little Street. Thankfully, it's been all renovated, repaved. But has, has anyone noticed that the section between Linden and DeWitt, so you come down off of Union, once you go past Huesmith, it's that section from DeWitt to Linden. It's almost a veritable roller coaster ride. I, it seems as though the paving company may have run out of asphalt at certain points, or maybe my Subaru is in residence with the, the street. But I, I, I feel my car bouncing, and it's just that section. The other parts of Little Street that have been repaved are perfectly okay, but there seems to be some issue with the amount or lack thereof of asphalt that the paving company used in that section. You could ask, ask somebody to, to look at, because over time, I think, well, maybe over time it'll wear out, it'll even out, but maybe not, maybe it'll worsen, but it's just something that needs to be addressed. On the consent agenda, it was already mentioned, item number I, the letter I, letter I, which has Floyd Place. I'm on Floyd Street. There's also a Lloyd Place, which is the street that was just dedicated after the late Raymond Kimball. So you should just rectify, you probably mean Lloyd Place, not Floyd Street, but just something to, to clarify. And then the last thing I, I want to mention tonight, I had asked at the last meeting if the town hall, as it's done in all the last few years, was doing anything to commemorate Pride Month. Now, I usually keep my own personal life to myself, but my niece, the love of my life, who just graduated from the University of Pennsylvania with her master's in health sciences, is a proud member of the LGBTQ community. And I would give her my last drop of blood, my last breath. And to see this town, all of our other communities, recognize Pride Month. Nutley, Bloomfield, Moncler, they did it even before June started, but we were noticeably quiet. And I, I want, would like to know why. And I'm going to say something now, which will probably just go get a few, why we knew Sheldon couldn't be nice to us while we were even known. But it's fairly well-known to this community that two members of this council are reportedly members of the LGBTQ community. So why, why, you know, the, the town would, this year, not do anything to commemorate Pride Month escapes me. Alright? So, I laugh at it, but, you know, whatever. I'm not going to say anything more. I think most of, most of the people in this township know who I'm referring to, but I think it was just a disservice to that community that this town hall did nothing to commemorate Pride Month.
Thank you. Mr. Dershowitz?
Yes.
I will say that I am the first mayor in the history of Belville to participate in pride activities. I actually go to Clare Moss Hospital every single year when they do a flag raising. I assist them in their flag raising. I financially donate to them. Every time I perform a wedding, I make a donation to Clare Moss's pride, an organization that does that. And actually, Mr. Sheldon, I'm the first mayor to do that. The prior mayor never did that, interestingly. So there is something a township does, at least me representing the township does. You should be commended for that. I don't need to be commended.
Well, you're the first one doing it. That's why you should be commended. But I want to thank you all for reappointing both me, Mr. Villano, and Mr. Soriano to the zoning board. However, I have to ask a specific question.
Name and address of our council.
Uh, Jerry Del Gercio in Groce Street. I understand he's just amended to make Mr. Soriano set a regular member and alternate one, and that is the position he currently has. The question I have is, what is, what did you put for his term?
So an alternate term is shorter.
It's two years.
No, we're gonna hold it, Jerry, amend it.
We're gonna amend it. No, no, I understand that. But also, you mentioned that you're moving Mr. Bruin. Bruin, who's the second alternate.
Guyanese.
Guyanese, I'm sorry. I'm very sorry.
He's planning on-
Yeah, he's being moved, yes, but he's being moved from alternate two to alternate one, and I believe he said he's getting a four-year term. He can only get a two-year term as an alternate. Because I want to get that straightened out. Thank you. The last thing is, well, next to the last, we are right, you were class three, definitely. But the last thing is, there is at least one or two members of the planning board that are class fours that come up this year, but it hasn't been mentioned. Of whom it is?
We have an appointment. We have a, a resolution to reappoint all members of the planning board that are up.
Yeah, but on the last page, they put specific names. That's how all this stuff got discovered. And the question is, I was told there is no names of class four members listed.
So, resolution W, which is 176, appointing, appointing, reappointing members of the planning board. So I don't have the actual resolution in front of me.
But that doesn't reflect the names. We used to put individual names in the resolutions.
Well, on, on the planning board, how all this got discovered that it was getting fouled up, is on the last page, it had Mr. Soriano and Mr. Villano as regular members, and I wasn't even mentioned. So that's why I'm saying we don't want the planning board not getting fouled up.
So the only, the only class four members that are up would be Lawrence, but he's the second alternate.
Right, so he's going the first.
He's going the first.
He's only a two-year term.
He's the only one that's up in 2023. Mr. Graziano is a class three, up in 20, that's it. The only two people that were up.
No, that's not true. There's somebody on class four. It's either one or two members.
Class four or class three?
Class four.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at-
And there's nothing listed.
No.
Well, you have two class, either one or two class four members that have to be up this year. Now-
Mr. Guyanese is considered a class four, but he's considered the alternate.
Yes, yes, but there's six class four member regulars and two alternates on the planning board. That's how the planning board works. It's a nine-member board, okay? So, nine member with two alternates, so it's 11 total. There has to be at least one or two class four members that are up this year. Last year it was one, and it was, I believe, Mr. Banda. And then he got changed, but he was reappointed last year. But this year, there has to be at least one, possibly two members whose term has expired. Now, I understand Mr. Bove resigned. I don't know if he's one of these. He resigned, but I don't remember anybody being appointed to fill his unexpired term either.
Howard, do we have the names?
I just don't want nothing getting fouled up. That's why names. I came up here. Okay.
The secretary works in the building. It's not that hard.
Well, the good thing about this is I believe the next planning board meeting is after your next meeting. So this could be resolved without causing any problem by your next meeting. So that would be good. But I know there's definitely at least one, maybe two, class four members whose term expired. Now, whether Mr. Bove was one of them, I don't know. But I know Mr. Bove, I believe, resigned and never, nobody was ever appointed in the balance of his term. So that's why I'm bringing it up. That's the only reason.
Thank you.
And like I said, class, yes, yes. As a matter of fact, I brought you a list of all the stuff after it was all fouled up.
A list was distributed.
I'm looking at the sheet now. It's a list.
I have to send Tommy a list. Jackie sent me a list.
The only one that's up this year was Tom. Tom, I mean, it's just you. You're the only one that's up in 23 and Lawrence. It's just that. Everyone else is 26, 24, 25, 26. That's it.
The way it is, and it's-
I know, it's supposed to be staggered, but sometimes it does.
No, no, but, but it's always been staggered, but you had two years in which there's two people up, and two years in which one person is up to add up to six for the class four. Somebody had to be up for class four this year.
So we'll pass this as we have it, and if there's an issue, we'll deal with it.
Absolutely.
Secretary does work in the building. Anthony, I'm serving. You can get ahold of her.
Yeah, the terms are-
Anybody else in public comment? No. I'm taking a motion to close. Anybody on, on telephone? No? Any motion to close, public comment?
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call her off.
Councilman Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Summer Burke?
Yes.
So it's all trying to pay attention here. There's going to be some moving parts with the consent agenda. So, do we want to, I'm going by my letters here. Do we want to take off I? Do we have the exact street? Because should we clarify if it's Floyd Place, Floyd Street, or Lloyd Place?
All I do is clarify.
Who's going to clarify? Do we have somebody here to clarify? No, no, this would be this. Is it in the wording of the resolution? Just the titles are all potential. That would be 163. I'm sorry, 160.
This came from the millennials and it does say Greenwich Street, Berkeley Avenue, and Lloyd, not Lloyd or Floyd. It says Lloyd Place Improvement.
Right, so the title's wrong, yes.
So we just have to change the title.
We've got to correct it.
Correct it.
Yeah, you can amend it.
Yeah.
Or it's Lloyd.
We have a bunch of them. We have a bunch to amend. So let you do, how about we just, let's, right now, there's going to be a few. Let's pull off I, and let's prove it as amended to read Lloyd Place.
Yep.
Give me a motion for just that.
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second for Resolution I, which is 160-2023. Motion made in second. Clerk, call her off.
Councilman Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that one's done.
So you want to pull L, M, and N?
I'm gonna pull L, M, and N.
Pull, pull M separately.
L, M, and N separately. We have, let's get, let's pull off right now R, which is Resolution 171-2023. Let's amend that.
What's wrong?
So it has to be-
Resolution reappointing Tom Graziano is class three.
Class three.
Yep.
Want a motion for that?
I have Resolution M. I have for-
Not M, not M, it's R.
R.
We're going R, 171.
171, R. So Resolution R, Resolution 171-2023, we're going to, I'm going to take a motion to approve it as amended to read Thomas Graziano, class three member of the planning board.
So move second.
We have a motion made in second for Resolution 171-2023. Clerk, call her off.
Councilman Cosarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Matari?
Yes.
Blavel?
Yes.
Okay, so the resolutions for the zoning board?
V, right.
Is that okay? We have to amend that.
We have to amend. I amend Gustavo to be an alternate, still not, two, two- Yeah, the two, two-year term as an alternate. Soriano.
Do you have that? Okay. So, so let me get a, let me get a motion for Resolution 175-2023 to approve as amended to include Mr. Soriano as a class-
As an alternate, as an alternate. Two-year term.
Two-year term.
Yeah. Motion, second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call her off.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Tom LaBert?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. For now, we're just going to leave the planning board the consent agenda in case there's an issue in the future, we'll change.
Yes, we just want to move that.
And.
You want to move the consent agenda, but we're pulling L, M, and N?
Yeah, and let's pull X as well. So now I need a motion to move the consent agenda without I, which is 160, which we're ready to vote on, without R, which is 171, we're ready to vote on. So a motion to move the consent agenda, and now we're just pulling out L, M, N, and X.
So moved, second.
A motion made in second, clerk, call her all for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Tom LaBert?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. L, which one can you do, Ben?
I can do that here.
Which one can you do?
I, M, so we can do L and N.
So let's, I need a motion to move letter L, which is 163, and N like Nancy, which is 165, together. We have a motion made.
Motion, second.
And second for L, Larry, and N, Nancy. Clerk, call her all.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Tom LaBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, I need a motion to move Resolution M like Michael, which is 164.
So moved, second.
Motion made in second to move M, 164. Call her all.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Thank you for that.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Tom LaBert?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Take no part. My apologies, Albert. I have to change my vote on L and N to take no part. Yeah, so L and M, I'm changing my vote, which I can do before we adjourn the meeting. So changing my vote to take no part for L and N. Now it just took no part in letter M.
Okay, last one.
I needed someone to take a, pull off X, Resolution X, which is 177.
Motion for X, second.
We have a motion made in X. I didn't know what to comment, but as I said during my mayor's report, this was about the ATVs and dirt bikes. I'm hoping that this goes to our state legislators. I'm hoping it goes to those who are currently candidates for state legislature. I'm telling you, it's an issue along with this resolution. I have a live, a Facebook, no, I have a YouTube video that shows about maybe five minutes of bikes and ATVs going down Washington Avenue, including the sidewalks, which is different than the video that Councilman Casarelli had. I can assure you, if this was happening in Middletown Township, they wouldn't be standing for it. The police office wouldn't stand for it, local police department, I wouldn't stand for it. So hopefully, we can implore the governor and our state legislators to actually act to give our police department once again the authority to intervene. So we have a motion made in second, clerk, call her all.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Tom LaBert?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes. Okay, we're getting close. New business. We can do A, B, C, and D, I'm assuming all together.
Motion, second.
We have a motion made in second for A, B, C, and D on the new business. Clerk, call her all.
Councilmember Casarelli?
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Mottari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Tom LaBert?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Take no part. Next on our agenda is a motion to adjourn.
No. I'm sorry.
Well, we're still new business, guys.
Right, because it's, I was talking to new business, and this would, it prompted. So first, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Frank, he did a great job, our CFO.
Here, here.
With explaining everything and how he's consolidated. So, thank you.
It's Frank's name.
The other thing that I want to ask, and again, this just came up because of new business. Is it possible that we, town, us, council, go ahead, and we add the combined conference meeting to both agendas? Because instead of having it once a month, we need it two times a month, like today. Some new business came up. I actually read the agenda that was sent to me and didn't see the new business until I came in here. So I did what I needed to do, and I didn't have all the intel. So me, with my mouth, I speak, can't I speak? But that being said, I want to get combined conferencing on both agendas, number one.
On both meetings.
On both meetings, I'm sorry.
For both meetings for the month.
Correct. And then I want to also ask if we can actually have a stop date, Albert? I'm sorry, if we have a stop date on when these things can change? If the agenda says. Yeah, if it's Friday, if Friday, no changes until the meeting happens, until Tuesday. Because honestly.
Good idea.
Honestly, because.
It's not practical.
Well, it can be practical if we, if we follow a process. I honestly feel that way, because to come in here prepared and for seeing something and not being briefed or knowledgeable about it, I'm going to draw my conclusions and my expectations, which may be wrong. And it's not right for me as a councilperson, and I don't think it's fair for any of us.
Well, the, I mean, this wasn't, the agenda was sent, the updated agenda was sent out.
Well, I can show you my emails. I can show you my emails.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The deputy mayor is correct. It was today, Tuesday, at noon, and I was still getting new information. And please put this on, ladies and gentlemen. I agree. And when I first started here, it was Thursday, 4:00 PM. So I can start giving you a draft agenda by noon on Friday.
But that's why it's called a draft, right? It's not called a final agenda on Friday.
Yes, yes, but on meeting day, on a, at 12:00 noon, you're still putting information, and everybody's asking. And this is where a lot of the terms and.
I, I can't accept that. I mean, those, we, we negotiated and we discussed those terms as far as the appointments. I was in the office, in town hall on Friday.
I'm not talking about that.
No, no, I'm sorry, to say what Albert said. The titles, that was emailed to the mayor and council two weeks ago. That was printed out in your office last week. I can't say that the Monday changes have anything to do with the terms being wrong, because we did that all last week.
And I'm not just talking about terms. I'm talking about even myself, coming here with new business. It's not fair to say here in front of new business with us. It should be.
But it was sent out today. It was sent out today.
I'm just, right, all I'm doing is for, for us, for transparency.
I don't.
I, I like to see a stop date, because, you know, all our, all our things should be in order by when it's delivered. Well, that's just my personal opinion that we do with.
And you're entitled to it. It's just when, when, sit up here and get a packet, that's a draft. Notably, a draft on Friday is one thing, but to be the professionals that are here all day, a lot of times I'm here, things change from Thursday to Tuesday, council. So I have, I totally understand the frustration of, of the clerk when somebody drops something on them on Monday, and worst-case scenario, the township attorney has to review stuff and draft stuff and change stuff. That's way too much, and that should definitely be a drop dead date. But if it's a resolution that Vinnie and I were working on with Jaffe Communications on Friday, and all it is is just add this resolution for ATVs, as, you know, the last resolution's literally slipping a piece of paper, and it's not anything that the attorney has to review, that has to be coordinated moment. So there, it's a fine line between stuff that requires a lot of work, and then I agree with you. If we don't have time to digest it, or the clerk don't have time to facilitate all that. But if it's just a 50th anniversary or something from somebody that says, can we get that done on a Monday? Yeah, sure, it's, it's a block party, you know.
So, 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 I'll agree, I'll agree to disagree for the simple fact, you know, look into business, it's a resolution, four of them. I want to digest it. I understand it, I want to look at it, and I don't want to be in a position at, when I come in, 5:00, 4:00 o'clock, to read it and have to go ahead. I like to digest. Right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm sorry. No matter what it may be, but if it's something is simple, and maybe there's a criteria behind it. It's just something that, that's me. I like to do my homework, we like to read the packets. I like to make sure I'm transparent to everybody in, in my homework.
And there's also mechanisms, if the council isn't happy with that, there could have easily been a motion to table it, and it could have been a motion to table, and it could be on the next meeting too.